And then we're going to adjourn, okay? Then I'm gonna go up.
Don't need it. You're born here or you're not?
I'll tell you why. I've been suffering from obstructive vision. See him to the right. That full side. And...
Uh, call the mayor's office.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. We'd like to call this evening's special meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. Welcome our listening audience. H. Wayne Wilson is here from WCBU as well as cable channel 22. At this time, we would like to ask the clerk to take the role, please.
Mayor Artis.
Here.
Councilmember Akison. Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Grab.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Montalongo. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Rigenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Ruckregel. And Councilmember Turner.
Present.
You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we'd like to ask everyone to stand and join us. We're gonna have an invocation by Minister Larice Hightower. And then, following that immediately will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, everyone. Can you please bow your heads and close your eyes? Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you with humbled and grateful hearts. We are humbled before you, praying and seeking your face, turning from our selfish desires and asking you to heal our land. God, we seek you for mercy because the sins that are running rampant in our communities has brought along with it desolation and plagues and judgment upon our city. We humble ourselves and pray for a fuller revelation of your glory, and we ask that you heal our land. However, Lord, we remain grateful and hopeful, knowing that you are still at work. You are yet giving us an opportunity to walk in love towards our brothers, our sisters, and all fellow man. Help us to operate in love, patience, and kindness. Help us to not be envious, boastful, and arrogant or rude. Help us not to just insist on having our own way. Lord, let us keep from being irritable or resentful, and let us not rejoice in wrongdoing, but let us rejoice with truth and with doing good. We turn from everything that contradicts your spirit. We ask that you forgive us and empower us, each of us. Empower this council, Lord, to walk in your love, your joy, your peace, your patience, your kindness, your goodness, your faithfulness, your gentleness, and your self-control. Lord, please hear our prayer. Bring healing upon the city of Peoria. In your heavenly name we pray. Let us all say amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Pastor Hightower. Madam Clerk.
Our first item is 19-136 is a request to approve a contract, tract with ReRig Pacific Company, in an amount not to exceed $36,439, to purchase 702 new 95-gallon garbage carts for replacement and inventory.
Councilman Turner, we have a motion. Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
19-137 is a request to approve a contract with Waste Quip, in an amount not to exceed $59,154, to purchase 260-gallon dome-top litter containers to be used for neighborhood trashcans.
Councilman Grab makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Moore. Is there any discussion on this item? Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question for the city manager. I'm glad to see that you've added that the city will work with any neighborhood organizations that want to utilize the old garbage cans for community gardens or that thing. I believe I contacted or brought that up. Can you tell us how that will proceed, who they should contact?
Thank you. They're gonna need to reach out to Public Works and request one of the old trashcans. We're gonna be collecting those as we get the new carts coming in, and we'll probably hold them all down at Darce Street. So as we're able to do that, we'll make the arrangements for pickup. It's not likely that our staff's gonna be delivering those carts, so they're gonna have to make those arrangements themselves to pick that up and take it and place it where they want it, so.
Thank you. Is there a specific person they should ask for at Public Works?
If they just simply call the main line right now, there's no specific point person at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, are these 200 litter containers already spoken for?
No.
So how would citizens and communities reach out?
So what we've identified is that we're going to place them where we have current locations, but we've only had about 140, I think, locations where we currently have those carts, those locations, or the trashcans that are current locations. After that, we'll start to look at working with the neighborhood associations on the rollout of where those are. And Public Works will come out and we'll work with Stacy Peterson to get more information out on what the neighborhood associations can do about requesting a location for a trashcan.
Will these new cans be on some type of process or program or route so that they can be picked up as well?
Yeah, the intent is that the new cans will be part of the PDC's routes to pick up those cans. They'll use their automated equipment to pick it up and dispose of the trash.
Neighborhood associations could call to Public Works or they call...
They can reach out to Public Works and we'll start to log where they can...
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Rigenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's important to note that this is a new service we're providing for the neighborhoods and that this is part of the PDC contract that came into effect last year. So we've had a lot of discussion about the fine print on this, and this is some fine print that I think we can all be proud of because we're gonna have 200 garbage cans in the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I mean, seeing no further lights, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion in a second. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Item 19-130 is a request to concur with the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending Appendix A, the Unified Development Code, relating to off-street parking schedule and overparked impact fee.
Councilman Seer, we have a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Grab. Discussion on this item. Seeing no lights, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
19-131 is a request to concur with the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending Appendix A, the Unified Development Code, relating to buildable area in the Class CN Neighborhood Commercial District.
Councilmember Moore makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilman Rigenbach. Is there any discussion on this item? Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you. I've got one question on this. Will this new zoning, the CN zoning, be only available for new builds, or is it also applicable to current structures?
I'm not sure that I see Assistant Director Doolin here. Oh, Lee is here in the back. Lee Allison from the Community Development Department is here in the back and should be able to answer the question.
Thank you. It's available to both new construction as a new building and new construction as a building addition.
Okay, so would it include rehabilitation of older buildings?
It can. Those would have the ability to, under a special use process review and approval, utilize this change.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Seeing no further lights, we have a motion in a second to approve this item. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Yes, we're at the presentations to retiring elected officials.
Okay, I will make my way to the podium and ask Councilman Turner if he would meet me there. I just told Councilman Turner that after 24 years, you get a standing ovation. We have a proclamation, actually a resolution here for Councilmember Akison as well. She was not able to make it tonight, and I look forward to presenting Councilmember Akison with the resolution as well, after her eight years of dedicated service to our community. But now, it really gives me great pleasure, and I'm glad you all are sitting down because it could take me a while to read this whole list that doesn't even come close to capturing all of Councilmember Turner's accomplishments and things that he's done for the city. Before I read it, and there's gonna be a few comments by councilmembers after we get done with this part, and, you know, I think that it's important for us to remember that there were some people that were very instrumental, outside of his family, of course, and the humble roots that Councilmember Turner came up with. But I do want to specifically mention Dr. James Stafford, who was the first African-American member of the council. And Councilman Turner introduced us many years ago, and over the years, he's always talked about how important that mentorship was to him and that it really did have a huge impact on his desire to sit around this horseshoe and serve, as Dr. Stafford did. I'm not gonna make you hold this because your arms will get tired before I'm done. Whereas W. Eric Turner served as councilmember for the city of Peoria from May of 1995 to May of 2019. This year brings to an end 24 years of dedicated service by W. Eric Turner to the city of Peoria, during which he gave freely of his time in an unselfish effort and demonstrated the highest ideals of public service by his dedication. And whereas W. Eric Turner, by his many years of efficient service as councilmember representing the residents of Peoria, also served as Deputy Liquor Commissioner from 1999 to 2019. And whereas, Councilman Turner also served on the Greater Peoria Mass Transit District Board, Special Ad-Hoc Committee of the City Council, Public Safety and Social Responsibility Committee, Community Growth and Development Committee, Fiscal Policy Ways and Means Committee, Solid Waste Disposal Committee, Ad-Hoc Committee to oversee the creation of a master plan for marketing and tri-county area budget, the Riverfront Business District Commission, the Ad-Hoc Commission to discuss council rules, Order of Business and Use of Commissions, Peoria Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, GIS Policy Committee, Senior Citizens Commission, Joint Labor Management Healthcare Committee, Advisory Committee on Police Community Relations, and Metropolitan Policy Committee. He's earned endless gratitude from the citizens of Peoria for his dedicated efforts to support neighborhoods across the city. And whereas, W. Eric Turner is the longest-serving African-American councilmember and served with four mayors, including Mayor Jim Maloof, Mayor Lowell Greaves, Mayor Dave Ransburg, Mayor Jim Artis, as well as nine city managers.[1371.00][1371.00](Laughter) Pregnant pause. And whereas, W. Eric Turner served two years in the United States Army, which included one year in Vietnam, we thank him for his service to the United States of America. And whereas, W. Eric Turner has always believed in the quote, "Be a good friend to all, say what you mean and mean what you say." Now therefore, be it resolved that this city council, on behalf of its members, the officials, and employees of the city of Peoria, and the citizens of the community, do hereby express to W. Eric Turner sincere and profound appreciation and thanks for his years of dedicated service as a Peoria City Councilmember and for being a man of wisdom, integrity, honesty, and a wonderful role model to all. Be it further resolved that the Honorable W. Eric Turner be presented this resolution and this resolution be spread upon the permanent records of the city of Peoria, Illinois, attested to by the city clerk, which will be passed by the City Council of the city of Peoria,
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. I asked the mayor, I said, "Well, how long do I have?" And he says, "Well, make your remarks as long as every council meeting that we have." But I guess I wanted to thank each and every one of you. I would have never made it here if it wasn't for you, those of you that supported me. I truly appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. Those of you that didn't support me, I hope that sometime over the past 24 years, that I found, that you found one issue, that you said, "Well, he did the right thing that time." So that's the way it goes when you're on the council. This has been a wonderful time in my life. Friends, I've enjoyed this service, and I'm gonna continue to support the members of the council and the things they do because the people that sit up here truly care about each and every one of you. Though we have debates and sometimes they're intense, we'll leave here and go have a pizza and a beer. And it's never personal, and I appreciate that from each and every one of you, and I've enjoyed serving. But my big words that I wanna say, it's been a wonderful time. I thank each and every one of you that helped me get to this. God bless you, and I'll make this short and simple.
Councilmember Grab.
Mayor Artis, I move to approve the resolutions presented to the retiring councilmembers, commending them for their service to the city of Peoria, and I do hereby request that the resolutions be spread upon the permanent records of the city of Peoria, Illinois.
Seconded by Councilmember Moore. Discussion, comments. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Well, I want to say thank you to Councilman Eric Turner for the advice and counsel that he's given me when I became on council. I came on council in 2013. I'd never run for anything, public office or anything, and had observed this body for a period of time. But it wasn't until I got behind the desk that I really found out what was going on here. And I'm gonna tell you, Eric was the first person to come to me and to provide me background information. He was a historian about things that had occurred before I got here, things that I would not have known because there were no files to go back and look at. And so I relied on Eric quite a bit for that information. I have to say that when you spoke about people not always agreeing with you during your tenure, there have been times when Eric did not support some things that I wanted to do, but I will tell you, 95% to 99% of what I wanted to do, Eric was always the first to step up and say, "I will second that for you." And the one or two things that wasn't, he had reasoned explanations as to why he didn't want to do that, and that was okay because that's what I like about Eric. We could talk about things whether we agreed about it or not, it was always professional. It was all, he always helped me to understand his point of view, although if it was against what I wanted, you know, you were always wrong, right? But I just wanted to say thank you because as an African-American on this council, it's a different kind of thing. I mean, it just is. And you were in a position to be able to help me to understand some concepts, to help me to navigate areas that I did not, were not known to me, and I greatly appreciate that, and I will always carry that with me. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Euler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilman Turner. I will start off by telling everyone the most important words to live by that you gave me after getting elected. Say what you gotta say and shut up. I have really tried to live by that in my time here so far on the council, and you really impressed upon me that when you keep it short and to the point, people actually listen to what you have to say. And I've watched you do that for many years, so I'll try and keep it brief here. When you were elected to this chamber, I was 10 years old.[1764.66][1764.66](Laughter) I distinctly remember a February 22nd, 2005, that I may have voted for you for mayor in a primary, the first mayor election that I voted in after moving to Peoria. I've deeply valued our friendship and our mutual respect for one another and our ability to work together on issues here and outside of here. You never... You never let me forget the 650 friend-to-friend letters that you went through and signed when I ran for county board. And I am grateful for the influence that you've had in my time here and my attempt to make a difference in this community, and I continue to look forward to our friendship and our many dinners and ability to work together on things to come. Thank you for your service, and I appreciate your friendship. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen.
Councilman Turner, it's been an honor for me to serve with you these last five and a half years. I mentioned this at your retirement party last week. My first vote for the city council 24 years ago was for Eric Turner. So, little did I know, when I made that vote 24 years ago, that we'd be serving together on this council, and it's been an honor and a privilege. I'm proud to have served with you. We've been friends to you for 24 years. I worked for you when I was here as an Assistant Corporation Counsel, and I always admired your commitment and your voice to neighborhoods, to people, to the police department, and to veterans. And I will always think of you when we talk about those issues and consider that, and remember things that you said and that you did during your distinguished career here at the city council. You will be missed a lot, and I thank you for all you've done for the city, and for all the citizens and for Peoria. We are a better place thanks to you.
Councilman Reganbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so for eight years, I've had the privilege of sitting next to this gentleman. And when you talk about politics in America today, people usually kind of cringe. And I think Eric Turner has set the bar very high for us. And, you know, when you look at Peoria and the people that have come through the ranks, the Bob Michaels and Ray LaHoods of the world, and Eric Turner's, we're very blessed. And the dialogue that we can have, as he said, even when you disagree, you can go out for a pizza and a beer afterwards. And I think that speaks volumes for the way that Councilman Turner's operated. And he offered me similar advice to Councilman Euler, that something to the effect, the less you say, the more people listen, you know? So, I'll leave it at that, Councilman, and just know we're going to miss you, and we're going to be calling you, though, for some of that institutional wisdom from time to time. So, don't change your number.
Thank you. Councilmember Seer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Turner, after tonight's celebration, I won't be able to send the rookie around the horseshoe anymore. But the first two years, everybody knows you live in the 5th district, and you've been a great mentor for me and a great supporter. And I really appreciate all you did for me, and all the coffees and luncheons we had together, and that last celebration we had last Saturday. So, thank you very much for what you've taught me the last two years, and I'm looking forward, like Councilman Reganbach, just hopefully you won't change your phone number, and I can still get in touch with you once in a while. Thank you very much, sir, for all your services.
Any other additional comments? Councilman Grab.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Turner, you and I were elected to this body same time, 1995, and I know you'll recall the serious consternation it created, including trying to figure out where we were going to be seated around this horseshoe. And I think it worked out pretty well, Councilman Turner. You've done an outstanding job, and we very much appreciate your service to the community, unwavering support for what was right, and you will be missed.
Thank you. Last call. Any comments for Councilman Turner? Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Turner, just want to thank you for being a good friend on the council, much like everybody else sat here today. You know, when I got onto the council, kind of funny, I was thinking about when I first got on the council, I was in my late 30s. Now I'm a little over 50. But you were one of the first to come up to me and talk to me and share with me some wise words and how things should work here on the council. But most importantly, you told me to always vote my conscience and do what I think is best, never pressured me to try and vote one way or the other. And I really appreciate that. As well as together, one of the things that we worked on together is we got the first community breakfast chat going, which I think was omitted in the mayor's words there. But the breakfast chat that we got started, we didn't really know where we were going to go with this, but we thought it'd be great to connect with the community, and that was something that Eric was really good at doing. So together, we put the plan, got the Dunkin' Donuts coffee and donuts, and we had a meeting going, which is still running today. And that was, what, about 10 years ago that that got started? So, and now I have one in the 4th, and there's one being in the 5th district. So from that discussion that we worked on together, it has spread, and I think it's made our community a much better place because of that. As well, I'm going to miss you from being able to have a drink and some dinner afterwards, where we got chances to kind of unwind from the meetings and just talk about real things, about family, and just about life, I guess. So, I'm truly going to miss you. You're a good friend. Thank you.
Thank you very much. A lot of it's already been said. Councilmember Turner and I have had many opportunities, especially probably over the last couple of months, as we knew that his days as a councilmember were coming to a close. Just reminiscing a little bit about some of the bigger discussions that we had over the years, and some of the things that seemed like a really big deal at one time, and now they don't seem like they're quite as big. But the thing that remains constant through that time are the people that we meet, the acquaintances that we make, the relationships that we establish. And I can say that my first six years on the council, I sat where Councilman Reganbach is sitting, and I was literally cutting my teeth with Councilmember Turner sitting right next to me and helping me all along the way. And even as I came to the other side, we've always sat on one side or the other, but he still remained an unbelievably huge resource for me to this day. And I've told him before, and I'll say it publicly many times, but I could never repay the countless hours and time that Councilman Turner has given to help me understand things and be a better public servant. So, I'm going to say, we'll miss you sitting around the horseshoe, but we're not going to miss you, because we're not going to let you go very far. I've already talked to him about a couple of commissions and a few other things. So, just thank you for the example that you've set, not just for our peers on the council, but for a lot of young people. And just like Dr. Stafford was as a mentor to you, I know that you've had that same impact on a lot of young men and women as well, that we can expect to see populating this horseshoe over the coming years. Thank you very much. I would also like to say that, again, Councilmember Akison was not able to be here. She was out of town, and I do think it's very appropriate that we thank her publicly for the record. She served eight years. She was a very well-versed councilmember, who always did her homework, regardless of what the subject was. She took on a lot of very important initiatives. I don't want to say which was the most important, because I don't want to say that for her, but I know that complete streets and making our city a more walkable community, more vibrant community was always at the top of her list. So, Madam Clerk, I want to make sure that the record reflects that the council also expresses our thanks to Councilmember Akison for her eight years of service on the city So we do have Councilmember Grab's motion on the floor that was seconded by Councilwoman Moore to make sure that these resolutions are spread throughout the record, and we have that motion, and you can cast your ballots, please. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We would be adjournment of the old council.
We have a motion to adjourn this part of the city council by Councilmember Turner. And the guy that was 10 years old when you got elected will second the motion. Councilman Euler, please cast your ballots. You have to vote. That motion passes unanimously. This part of the meeting is adjourned. Just for everyone, it's just going to take a couple of minutes here to get the clerk over and ready to administer the oaths. This will only take a minute, and so we'll keep it going.
Good evening and welcome. This is the time that we will be administering the oaths of office for all the at-large councilmembers. So the first one to be sworn in, I would like to call Rita Ali forward to be sworn. I, Rita Ali...
I, Rita Ali...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution...
Of the state of Illinois...
And of the state of Illinois...
And I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of the office...
The duties of the office...
Of councilmember at large...
Of councilmember at large...
Of the city of Peoria, Illinois...
Of the city of Peoria, Illinois...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
Congratulations. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, John L. Kelly...
I, John L. Kelly...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois...
And I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of the office...
The duties of the office...
Of councilmember at large...
Councilmember at large...
Of the city of Peoria, Illinois...
Of the city of Peoria, Illinois...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
I would like to call forward Zachary Euler to be sworn. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Zachary M. Euler...
I, Zachary M. Euler...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois...
Constitution of the state of Illinois...
And I will faithfully discharge... The duties of the office...
The duties of the office...
Of councilmember at large...
Councilmember at large...
Of the city of Peoria, Illinois...
Of the city of Peoria, Illinois...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
Elizabeth J. L. Jensen, sorry, please come forward to be sworn. Okay, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Elizabeth L. Jensen...
I, Elizabeth L. Jensen...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois...
And I will faithfully discharge...
I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of the office...
The duties of the office...
Of councilmember at large...
Of councilmember at large...
Of the city of Peoria...
Of the city of Peoria...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
Congratulations. And Sid Paul Ruckriegel was unable to be here this evening. He is out of town on business, and we had him come to the council chambers this afternoon, and with Mayor President and some of his family and friends, we swore him in, so he will not be here this evening. So, we will be returning to the agenda in just a moment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. While the clerk's making her way back to the clerk's chair, I would like to recognize that we have a number of elected officials that are with us this evening, and we are very thankful and happy that they're here. I tried to scope the whole crowd, and if I didn't see them, I'm going to blame it on my glasses. But first of all, the third-ranking member of the Illinois House came all the way back today. I can't even imagine, I wouldn't be surprised if she had to go back to Springfield tonight, right, with everything that's going on. But thank you to Jahann Gordon Booth for being with us this evening. I'm going to read the rest of them that I have here, and we'll thank them at the end. But we have Junior Watkins from the Peoria County Board, Robert Johnson, the president of the Peoria Park District, Jackie Petty from the Park Board, Martha Ross from the Peoria Public School Board, and Gail Thetford from the ICC Board, and unelected but very important also is President Sheila Cork Bailey, who's here from ICC, and we thank you all for being here. I hope I didn't miss anybody.
Joyce Herant is here, too.
I'm sorry, Joyce Herant is here, too. I apologize, Joyce. Anybody else? Trustee Daniels is here, too. I'm sorry. Anybody else that I forgot? I knew I'd missed one or two. Okay, thank you all for being here. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
We are calling the 2019 to 2021 city council to order, and I will call the role, Mayor Artis...
Here.
Councilmember Ali...
Here.
Councilmember Seer...
Here.
Councilmember Grab...
Here.
Councilmember Jensen...
Here.
Councilmember Kelly...
Here.
Councilmember Montalongo...
Here.
Councilmember Moore...
Here.
Councilmember Euler...
Here.
Councilmember Reganbach... Councilmember Rigenbach
Here.
And Councilmember Ruckregal is absent. You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, we dispensed with the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance already, so at this time, if there were any remarks by the newly-elected at-large council members, we would like to certainly allow them at this time. Councilmember Ali.
Thank you, Mayor Artis. Wow. I took the scenic route to get here, but I finally made it to the horseshoe. First and foremost, I want to give thanks to Almighty God, leading me, guiding me, and protecting me. I thank Minister Larice Hightower for that beautiful opening prayer. Where are you, Larice? Thank you very much for being here. My daily prayer is, God, make me an instrument of your peace and love. I thank you, all the supporters, who believed in my ability to lead and stood behind me in such an overwhelming way to make today a reality. I'm joined today by many special people, and I can't name them all, but I see you, and I appreciate you. I want to recognize my amazing mother, Nora Bryant. I'm so happy that you're here with me tonight, Mom. I love you so very much. You know, during my campaign, my mother would occasionally watch the council meetings on television, and she'd call me and say, "Is this what you're running for? You don't want that job." Honestly, she said, "You better be careful what you wish for." And I'm sure there's going to be days like that, that I'll say to myself, "What did I get myself into?" But I'm ready to serve, I'm ready to take on those challenges that come with this very important job. Sitting behind me is my lovely and talented daughter Brandy, Brandy Bryant, who also doubled as my campaign manager. Brandy? Oh, okay. And my smart and sassy sister, Robin Grantham. Some, many of my other family members are here, my grandchildren, we have five generations here, including my great-granddaughter, Debbie. I've got close friends that are in this area, as well as throughout the chambers, and I just want to thank you all for your love and just overwhelming support. Peoria is a city that is rich in diversity. We have people from many, many cultures and ways of life. I'm going to back up just a second, and say thank you, Jahann, for driving probably 100 miles an hour and coming to see this. I know you didn't, I know you didn't break any speed limits, but thank you for being Peoria is a city that is rich in diversity. We have people from many, many cultures and ways of life. We have people from different races and ethnicities, different religions, different genders, different incomes, political affiliations, ages, and beliefs. But we're all Peorians. We are all Peorians. As your council member, I will work to develop greater respect and appreciation for difference in our city. For it is through this respect and appreciation that we will begin to address issues of equity, enabling everyone in our city the opportunity to reach their full potential and enjoy success. I look forward to working alongside my fellow council members in building a stronger Peoria by building stronger people. Strong people build strong economies. Strong people build strong schools. Strong people create safe neighborhoods. Strong people find common ground to accomplish great things together. So in the words of Marvin Gaye, "Let's get it on."
Did you say Kelly?
I did.
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone in the room, and everyone watching and listening, and all those who aren't for this wonderful privilege, and I hope I can become worthy of it. A number of my relatives are with me tonight to celebrate. My four sisters are here, and if you just wave your hands, but Elizabeth Brimeyer, and Ann Grill, and Ann's husband, Steve Grill, Dr. Steve Grill, Jane Shatted, and my sister, Margaret Kelly. Also here are two of my children, Julia Byard, and accompanying her is my granddaughter, Anna Byard, along with my son, Brian Kelly. Sitting behind me, the first person I'd like to introduce to you is my father, Joe Kelly. And Mr. City Manager, you, I think, are aware that my father was the president of Peorians for Council Manager Government back in the 1950s, and they won, and that's why you're here, Mr. Manager. Dad also served on the county board and did many other community-oriented things in his time, and he, he's my second-biggest fan. My biggest fan is also sitting beside my dad, my wife, Amy, whose idea it was, believe it or not, for me to run for city council. I was going to work in my profession until I was somewhere in my 80s, and she said, "John, why don't you retire and run?" And so with that endorsement, I couldn't say no, and I'm glad that I did not say no. So thank you, Amy. I hope that in my service here, we can move our city more toward a growth, a growth stance. With that growth, my goal is also a general prosperity, not a concentrated prosperity. And I am a fairly religious person, and I feel that if people are economically secure, they tend, and free, they tend to become more virtuous, and they tend to become more in tune with what the Lord has to say to them. I think many of our problems are because we're far away sometimes from the Lord, and so what little part I can play, I think economics has something to do with that, and I hope to pull us in that direction. But whether I do or whether I don't, I would really ask all of you to say a prayer for me, that my tenure is one that is constructive and good.
Councilmember Euler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll start by thanking the great citizens of the city of Peoria who entrusted in me another opportunity to sit here and be a leader in this community. It's definitely a different experience running for reelection, you have a thing called the track record, and when you go out campaigning, you have to talk about the things that you've done, and it's very different than when you're running to get elected, and I'm encouraged by the overwhelming amount of support from the community, that people are happy and supportive of the things that I did in my first term on the council, and look forward to continuing to push to better our community, focusing on economic development, focusing on a business plan, focusing on challenging us to be a better, more efficient, more effective city and community, and I look forward to the opportunity to continue to be of service to my constituents, to each one of you. I want to thank my wife, Heather, who's sitting behind me, for her continued support in these efforts, you don't do this alone, and there are definitely very challenging days, and I want to thank my friends who are as close to family as family gets, sitting here in front of me, each one of you means a great deal to me, and I appreciate all the support that you've given me throughout, not only this campaign, but things that go on in personal, everyday life, and I couldn't ask for a better, more supportive group of friends than my guests that are here with me tonight, you mean a great deal. And I just really appreciate the opportunity to sit here amongst my colleagues and work on the challenges that are in front of us, and if I may, address a couple of things to my new colleagues, Councilwoman Ali and Councilman Kelly, welcome to the horseshoe, I look forward to serving with you and working with you over the next four years on many challenges that lie ahead, and it's definitely an interesting experience, once you get here and realize that, you know, when you're running for office, sometimes things are different than what they seem, and you get here and realize on the other side that there's, the choices are even tougher than they may have seemed from the outside, you see the details of an issue, you see what went on behind the scenes that you may not have seen before, and sometimes that even changes your mind on a position that you took, and that's a challenging and painful sometimes process, but you have to be open-minded enough to consider all of the aspects that are in front of you, and evaluate the challenges that we have, and realize that sometimes you have to look at things from a different angle, you have to take in new ideals, and you have to really listen to what the community is telling you and balance that with the information that you're provided, because, you know, your citizens are looking to you to provide them guidance and to make decisions that are in their best interests, and you can only do that if you're really open-minded to looking at all of those things. The next thing I would say is you always have to remember that to do anything here, you have to count to six, and it's tough sometimes to do that, it is incumbent upon you to rely on relationships, and you get surprised sometimes, the alliances that you build on certain issues, and who might be in your corner on one thing, and then you're in a different corner on another, and you can sometimes be inclined to end up in a clique of certain colleagues, but again, you have to be open-minded, that maybe there's an alternative on the other side, and sometimes you have to negotiate a different path forward to get to those six votes, and it takes a lot of give and take and negotiation to really come to a reasonable conclusion for everybody, and this has been mentioned already tonight in talking about diversity, that's what a board is all about. If everybody thought the same thing, you would only need one person and not a group of us, and so you have to value the differences and the opinions that we each bring to the table as we try to vet out issues, because we're just coming from different backgrounds and different places, and as a wise councilman once told me, "Say what you got to say and shut up." So that's what I'm going to do here. Thank you for the opportunity again, city of Peoria, I thank God for this opportunity, and God bless the city of Peoria.
Councilwoman Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, I want to thank my family, my husband, Dave, and my two boys, William and Charlie, who were a lot younger when I first embarked on the city council thing. They've grown up, and I think a lot of you have watched them grow up, but I want to thank them. I could not be here today, I could never have put my name in five and a half years ago, run twice for office, and served on this city council without their support and their love, so thank you very much for that. They've been my campaign cabinet, my door-to-door knockers, my soundboards, and they really are part of the campaign and my team and me, so, in fact, the whole reason why I put my name in for city council, and why I continue to serve, and why I run, I've said it over and over again on the campaign trail, but it's because I love this city, I love Peoria, and I want it to be a city, I want it to keep strong, keep growing, keep getting strong, so it's a city that my two boys choose to live in, just the way Dave and I did 24 years ago. I also want to thank all of my campaign team, many of whom are sitting right here in the front row, all the volunteers, everyone who donated money, who went door-to-door, who made phone calls, who did graphic design, I, this is your victory too, I wouldn't be here without any of you, so thank you all. I pledge that I will continue to ensure that all of the city business is done in an open and transparent manner, that's been my mantra, and I will continue to push for that, to advocate for that, and to ask questions on the council floor, and to make sure that decisions and discussions happen in a public and transparent manner. I also promise that I will continue to listen to every citizen, and to ensure that all voices are heard, all stakeholders' concerns are considered before we make decisions here around this horseshoe. I look forward to working with each and every one of you, some who I've been working with for the last five and a half years, and then the two new faces. One, Rita Ali, is a good friend, and I'm very glad to see her here, and I look forward to working with you, John, if I can see you over the podium there, and all of you, as well as our great city staff, our city manager, Patrick Urick, our city clerk. This is a great city, it's a great council, and I also look forward to continuing to work with all of the citizens of Peoria. Thank you.
Are there any comments by any of the council members before we adjourn? They all heeded Councilmember Turner's advice, too. Nobody's going to say anything after the elected, newly-elected, so I'll just say on behalf of those of us who are not newly-elected, we look forward very much to Dr. Ali and Mr. Kelly, two new breaths of fresh air, new perspectives, certainly two people that aren't new to this community, so you both bring a very diverse and well-rounded background, both of them somewhat different, which is a good thing for us, so we really feel, I know I can speak on behalf of the rest of the council, that we feel very fortunate to have both of you that want to serve in this capacity, the citizens put you here so they trust in your ability to do so, we certainly have a lot of challenges on our plate, but together, we'll find our way through them, so thank you, and to all the other council members that are back that were re-elected, thank you all as well. Madam Clerk.
We would be at citizens' opportunity to address the city council, we do not have any cards.
Okay. We don't have any cards tonight, but if there is anyone that wanted to address the city council, you can approach the podium. Boy, sometimes it just works just right. Madam Clerk.
We would be at the benediction by Monsignor Jason Gray.
Thank you, we'd like to welcome Monsignor Gray from St. Thomas to give this evening's benediction, could we all rise? Uh, somebody take the mic? We'll bring it over, we'll get it.
Good Mr. Mayor and Honorable Councilperson, thank you for the invitation and invited guests. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. And let us ask for the Lord's blessing. Almighty and eternal God, you have revealed Your glory to all nations, God of power and might, wisdom and justice. Through you, authority is rightly administered, laws are enacted, and judgment is decreed. Let the light of Your divine wisdom direct the deliberations of this City Council, and especially the newly-elected members. May they seek to preserve peace, promote our community, and continue to bring us the blessings of liberty and equality. We likewise commend to Your unbounded mercy all the citizens of this beloved city that we may be blessed in the knowledge and sanctified in the observance of Your holy law. And may we be preserved in that union and that peace which the world cannot give. And after enjoying the blessings of this life, be admitted to those which are eternal. We pray to you, who are Lord and God forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you very much, Monsignor. At this time, I would like to very quickly thank the city clerk and her staff, who did a very wonderful job in helping us prepare for this evening. Also, Michelle and Karen from the Council Manager Office, Stacy Peterson, our community communications director, and also our Public Works Department, who did a great job. Thank you all. We have a motion to adjourn the meeting by Councilmember Ali and seconded by Councilmember Kelly. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. The meeting is adjourned. We'd like to thank H. Wayne Wilson, his listening audience at WCBU, as well as Cable Channel 22. We will be here next Tuesday for our regularly-scheduled council meeting.